Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, May 3, 2022. I have a meeting announcement. All council meetings will be live streamed on the city website and the city channel, Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will the clerk please take the roll call?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
He's here. Can't hear. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavell. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
I see them online, but I'm not sure if we're having problems.
Yeah, they're all online. We have an audio problem.
Let me try it again. Reverend Burgess.
Here.
I see him, but he's not. His mic.
His screen's lighting up.
He's waving. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavell.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Here.
Seven members present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Repose. Agenda is amended. And our next order of business is proclamations. Councilman Coghill and Councilman Wilson, we please escort Mayor Ganey into the chambers. How are you?
Good.
Good to see you. Good to see you. And so with that said, we have a proclamation to be presented. And do you want to call up everyone from SEIU Healthcare to the front?
You want to first?
No, I just let you do first. But do you all want to come up and join Mayor Ganey, please, from SEIU Healthcare? Mayor Ganey's a little bit taller than I am.
How's everybody doing? Good morning. One, I just want to thank our healthcare workers because, you know, someone that just came out of COVID protocol and understanding just how serious it is, you know, and to talk about our frontline workers and going through the pandemic, treating everybody, knowing that they were at risk too. I think sometimes we take that for granted, but I understand just how severe that is, that you will put yourself before everybody else just to make sure that our region was healthy. And for that, you should give them a standing ovation and a nice applause because that's putting in that work. I have a proclamation I want to read, but before I do, there's some exciting things happening Saturday. I want them to come up and talk about it because, you know, I believe that a region grows when we all come together. And the more we give opportunity to come in together and growing, the more we get things accomplished. That's what I believe in because the history of this city and the nation is built on that principle. So I'd like for you to come on up and talk about what's going on on Saturday.
Hello, I'm Jody Fulton. I'm a nurse at UPMC Shadyside. This Saturday, May 7, at 11:00 a.m., we're meeting at Marrow Park near Shadyside Hospital. We're having the hospital workers march and the entire city is welcome to come. Come and say hello to the people that have carried this city through the pandemic. It's on paper now. The Pitt School of Social Work did the survey of hospital workers. Ninety-three percent of hospital workers consider leaving their jobs. So come out and let hospital workers, nurses, PCTs, aides, EVS, everyone from the hospitals in the region, let them know that you don't want them to leave their jobs. Let them know that you care and you're going to support them. Thank you.
Give them the time and location again.
It's Saturday, 11:00 a.m. at Marrow Park, and we're going to walk over to West Penn. It's right over near Shadyside Hospital. I think it's the Cross Streets Liberty and Baum. And after that, we're going to have a cookout and have some fun, but more importantly, you get to meet all of us.
So I'm encouraging everybody to come out, support our healthcare workers because at the end of the day, where would we be without them? So as we talk about nurses and hospital workers today, whereas nurses and hospital workers in Pittsburgh have dedicated their lives in promoting health and promoting healing, putting their lives at risk for every day, and whereas nurses and hospital workers are proud of the work they do every single day to provide high-quality compassionate care, and whereas nurses and hospital workers have put everything on the line to care for our communities and keep our hospitals running during the pandemic, but they are also burned out and exhausted, forced to care for increasingly sick patients with less support and fewer staff, that should never be the case. And whereas the combination of hospital overflowing with patients, longer hours, low wages, inadequate staffing, and a lack of voice and a lack of a voice at work have led to unprecedented levels of burnout, trauma, increasingly poor mental health, and whereas our local hospitals are grossly understaffed, ninety percent of hospital workers in a recent poll said they do not have enough staff to handle the workload. More than seventy percent of hospital workers who responded to the survey say they left the bedside due to insufficient staffing and being underpaid. And whereas 10,000 of our hospitals' jobs in Pittsburgh's nurses and hospital workers have a huge impact on our economy and health, with so many of the jobs filled by women and people of color, making sure these jobs are sustainable and that workers have what they need to provide the type of care to families, the critical care, is very important to our city. And I believe that, and I know you do. So therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh, Ed Ganey, do here, declare today Nurses and Hospital Workers Day and our beloved city, the City of Pittsburgh. Can we stand and give them applause, please? And remember, come on out on Saturday, 11 o'clock. Come on, let's show up. They supported us. Let's show up to support them. Thank you.
Stay here for a second. I just want to see if members wanted to say anything. You can sit down if you wanted to say anything. And then if Silas Russell wanted to say anything. I think you should say something. I'll end it.
Wait, who's first? Silas?
No, members.
Members, I'm sorry. Thank you. It's good to see you. I really am very, very happy to see you all in chambers to get this public appreciation and respect that I think is long overdue for not just the pandemic, but that has really, I hope, highlighted for all of us, the work that you've been doing day in, day out with. And we should always be highlighting your work and your importance to keeping us well in the City of Pittsburgh. You never know when a crisis will strike. Even, you know, we're in a pandemic now, so it's happened to more of us than usual, but you never know. And you all are always there for us. And it's time that we're there for you. So I appreciate all of your work. I appreciate the union's work and making sure that we get our hospital workers unionized, that she chose to unionize, and that we fight for you all getting what you need in order to provide us care. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I'll just simply say thank you, and we really appreciate the work you do.
Nice and sweet. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, and I really appreciate everything that you all have been doing throughout the pandemic. It's really, actually, quite a, it's incredible to look at, you know, how the workers really, you know, held up the public health system throughout the pandemic, and we're still seeing that even now. And even beyond, you know, what we see in the pandemic with illness, everything that, all the different types of emergencies that happen in the city, you know, the workers are there, whether it's the people that are, you know, making sure the facility is clean or the doctor, you know, up to the respiratory therapists, and then also the doctors that are, you know, doing surgeries. It's everything, everyone is just, you know, a team in the healthcare system. And I think you all, you know, want the support to make your team stronger. And I'll be there on Saturday, and I'll be there when you need the support to fight for wages and also better benefits. So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there anyone online? Any members online that want to say anything? Okay. And then I'm just going to say thank you very much for all that you do. We're actually going through our own transition here and having some difficulty right now with some illnesses on our side of the hall. And so that's why I asked a lot of the members to join us via Zoom. So I don't want to think it's that they don't want to be here. They would all love to be here to thank our hospital workers. We all appreciate what you do. I can tell you, I appreciate tremendously what you do, not only for COVID, but every day. I have a mother that lived to be 100 because of the amazing care here in Pittsburgh. She's still, she's on her way to 101. So I just want to thank you all for all that you do because even taking care of her a short time, I know what it's like taking care of one person. I can't imagine what you do on an everyday basis. So thank you. And thank you, Mayor Ganey, for recognizing them.
Thank you.
Silas, come on.
Thank you, Council President. I'm Silas Russell, Executive Vice President for SEIU Healthcare Pennsylvania. We're the union of nurses and hospital workers here in Pittsburgh and across the state. And I'll just say that we really appreciate Mayor Ganey, City Council, Council President Smith, Kell Smith, for standing with and behind hospital workers who are organizing, who are bargaining, who are doing everything in their power, both to stand up for themselves and their professions, but for the people they care for, right? And at the end of the day, if we don't make sure that hospital workers in the city have a voice in our largest and fastest-growing industry, we can't make sure that everybody in our community have what they need, whether it's economically or the care that they need to be able to receive whenever they go into a hospital and wait to make sure that they're well-staffed, staffed by professionals who have the support and the health that they need and the resources they need. And that's what hospital workers are marching for on Saturday. And we thank everybody for being out there on Saturday at 11 o'clock at Marrow Park to stand with hospital workers and make sure that they have a strong voice and the care that they provide and are able to continue to support the City of Pittsburgh and see it grow and prosper. So thank you.
Members want to join us for the vote? The members that are here, I apologize to the members that are not here.
Thank you, Madam President. Could everyone with Tree Pittsburgh come on up? I have a little cheek to you. We are still, we are, as Madam President said, we're still adjusting between being kind of half in person and half not in person, and sometimes we forget what we're supposed to be doing next. But we are very, very pleased to be here today to present a proclamation to Matt Urb and Daniel Crumrine, who have been working to improve our entire city by founding and carrying the work of Tree Pittsburgh for all of these years. I'll read the proclamation so I get all the details right. Whereas since 2006, the nonprofit Tree Pittsburgh has worked to protect the urban forests through tree planting and care within the City of Pittsburgh and promote education, advocacy, and land conversation throughout, I hope that's supposed to be conservation? Yeah. We have, we have our first typo. Sorry. Land conservation throughout our many neighborhoods. And whereas the City of Pittsburgh recognizes the legacies of Daniel Crumrine and Matt Urb, and whereas Daniel Crumrine has been a resident of the City of Pittsburgh for over two decades and receiving a BA in Spanish and Political Science and an MS in Education from Duquesne University, and whereas Daniel Crumrine has been serving the Pittsburgh environment since 2000, beginning as a founding board member and executive director of Allegheny Cleanways and later becoming the executive director of Tree Pittsburgh in 2007, as one of the two original employees. And whereas more than 1,200 volunteers in various parks and department, Parks and Rec and Department of Public Works staff have become, is that just parks or Parks and Rec probably, have come through the tree tender program under the leadership of Daniel Crumrine. And whereas Daniel Crumrine has led the organization through a period of incredible growth, including the restoration of a former steel mill into a state-of-the-art campus, and led and collaborated on efforts for Pittsburgh's Urban Forest Master Plan, the Urban Tree Canopy Study, and the Canopy Alliance. And whereas Tree Pittsburgh has raised millions of dollars and continues to raise money for the betterment of Pittsburgh's urban forest under Daniel Crumrine's leadership. And whereas Matt Urb has been a resident of the City of Pittsburgh for over two decades and a member of the Pittsburgh Tree Shade Commission since 2009. And whereas Matt Urb is one of the two original employees of Tree Pittsburgh and currently serves as the Senior Director of Science, Policy, and Planning. And whereas in the role of Director of Urban Forestry, Matt Urb has implemented the tree tenders program for the City of Pittsburgh's urban forest, executed the first installment of Silva cells in Pennsylvania, and spearheaded the development of the Pittsburgh Urban Forest Master Plan, which serves as a model for UFMPs across the nation. Whereas Matt Urb has devoted much of his time to conducting tens of thousands of site assessments across the city and worked closely in assisting to develop the recommended species list and approved species list for the city. Whereas Matt Urb is a continued source of expertise in urban forestry and innovative forestry practices. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh recognizes Daniel Crumrine and Matt Urb for their combined efforts to plant over 50,000 trees in our region and to educate the community about the importance of preserving urban forests. Be it further resolved, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh proclaims Tuesday, May 3, 2022, as Daniel Crumrine and Matt Urb Day.
I have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. Congratulations.
Before I hand it over, I want to give a special thanks. I have a cheat sheet in front of me here because the tree plantings and the native tree species that Matt has worked so hard on and that Tree Pittsburgh has raised so much money for to create the nursery that is actually growing them on the banks of the Allegheny River in my district, is that I get requests from my community gardens. And we are about to take possession and plant this month in little city parklets and on hillsides, the specifically requested species that we were able to get because of Tree Pittsburgh. We are about to receive elderberry, I think nanny berry, is that true? I've never seen one. I'm very excited to see one myself. Poppas, pomegranates, American chestnut, American plum, Allegheny serviceberry, and Canadian serviceberry. And again, these are so popular that they were requested by the residents in my district, and we were able to get them because of your help. So thank you so much for your work. I'm going to let you all speak. Oh, my gosh, Mayor, absolutely. Come on up.
You know, first, I want to say what a wonderful job, an incredible job Lisa Choffey does every year. You know, every single year, she's worked miracles to make this happen. Daniel and Matt, what you're doing for our city helps asthmatics. It helps people with different type of health conditions. It continues to demonstrate the power of our environment and how we plant trees to help people and save lives. The volunteers that you got and the money that you raised to help you do that, the best thing I could do on behalf of the city is just say thank you. Thank you for all you do to make our city great. And it's because of people like you why the city will continue to be the best city in America. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. It's been a great 22 years working in the environmental sector here in Pittsburgh. And I think back to Councilman Kraus on the TV there, cleaning trash in the South Side slopes way back when, and on and on. You all answer the phone when I call you, and that's the biggest thank you you could give to us. Anybody who thinks trees are not political just have never walked a day in my shoes. So keep answering the phone. I'm going to keep calling you. I hope we could meet this year before year end to talk some more. I gave a presentation on tree equity in Pittsburgh last week, and I'll be circulating that presentation. And I hope you'll take a look at that as we, you know, really try to tackle some of these big issues in the City of Pittsburgh. But thank you so much. It's been a wonderful, wonderful 15 years at Tree Pittsburgh.
I'd just like to thank everybody for the recognition. And, you know, we work with trees. They're not talking to us. So it's good to have somebody thank us for our work and look forward to more work here in Pittsburgh and planting more trees to help clean our air and provide the benefits that trees provide all city residents. Thank you.
Members want to join us for the vote? Join Councilwoman Gross for the vote. And then we have two to be read into the record. Madam Clerk, myself and Councilwoman Strasburger. Madam Clerk, double duty here.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 323. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby honor Mr. Roger Barber for his service to our country and recognizing him for his devotion to his faith and family, his volunteerism, and for his gift of music. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, April 30, 2022, to be Roger Barber Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilmember Strasburger presents Bill Number 324. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby celebrate the 48 years of transformational and life-saving service that has been provided by the Women's Center and Shelter of Greater Pittsburgh Staff. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 6, 2022, to be Women's Center and Shelter of Greater Pittsburgh Staff Appreciation Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Thank you for struggling through that. Is there a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second.
In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. Thank you, everyone. And that moves us on to our next order of business, which is public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state. The comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You have three minutes to speak. And our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen.
Good morning.
Good morning, Naomi.
Hi, Teresa. Shady trees, not shady deals in Vonnair. I am so looking forward to Tree Pittsburgh coming to Vonnair to plant in Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space. Not only do the property owners of Vonnair not consent to anything but a green space to replace the school, we absolutely do not agree to reapportionment. It would harm our community. This was read at my husband's funeral. Michael J. Mullen Reflection by Battalion Chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Fire Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Mike was a loving and compassionate husband, father, brother, relative, and friend, and more. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space is a needed preparation for Vonnair. Do your part. Shady trees, not shady deals in Vonnair. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. And our next speaker is Maisha Atkins. Maisha Atkins. Is she on? No, I'm not. And our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, Lawrenceville, Orozawa, Nihon, Black Rain. Global Intelligence Society, U.S., National Candidate Presidency, 2024, globalintelligence社 society.org. Maybe I will use some music from Tatsuro Yamashita from his work Futari, Fukaku, Ashuru, but maybe not. May, this week, first week is for us Asian Intelligence Week. According to Forbes Journal on Intelligence, China, South Korea, Taiwan, and Japan are in the top four. The United States is nowhere to be found in the top 10. RLM Links, University of Oxford, St. Anthony's College, the Institute of Japanese Studies, and University of Pittsburgh instructor, Japan and the United States. A concern of Pittsburgh Council is, it must be, I think, despair regarding how A concern of Pittsburgh Council is, it must be, I think, despair regarding housing of Pittsburghers. On Smithfield at Fort Pitt, there is a campsite. Housing value zero. Why me? On walking Beechwood off Forbes from Squirrel Hill, there's a castle house. Value 1.2 million plus. Why not me? Why? Why not? Both the Beechwood Castleite and the Smithfield campers are equals under our Constitution and the Declaration of Independence. I reject the Ordinance 2022-0300 for LEC as equity on equality destructive. Ms. Gross, how many houses are there in Lawrenceville? I don't think you know. I've asked you that via email and no answer. This is a scenario for LEC. Ms. Gross, are the houses on Fisk near Butler more affordable than houses on Fisk near Penn? Of 10 Fisk houses near Penn, two are zoned for limited equality, cooperative affordability, downcosting, and subsidizing for primarily non-white, materially poor buyers. The Fisk-Penn houses possessing unequal property variability are zoned close to the Lawrenceville Carnegie Library to increase equity. But owners of three, four Fisk-Penn houses to the right and left of LCL, as are one and two, but without the cost subsidy advantages, damn this inclusionary housing, affordable housing, LEC approach. They will sue the city.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elena Zaitsov. Elena? She on? Yeah.
I am Elena Zaitsov. I've lived in South Oakland for 42 years. I'm here today to talk about Ordinance 2021-1906, the Walnut Capital rezoning of part of Oakland. As we have learned the hard way about zoning in Oakland, what could be built with this rezoning has to be considered, not the pretty pictures we are shown. The Isley Site is next to Residential Oak Cliff. Part of the Isley Site is proposed to have maximum heights of 85 feet and the other part at 185 feet. The justification for the 185 is that it came out of the workshop on this site. That's true. The developer was there and recommended it. But also coming out of that workshop were resident comments that 185 was too high. Those comments did not make it through the city planner's filter, so a lower height was not recommended. Also ignored was one of the suggestions from paid consultants to have a row of townhouses along the Oak Cliff side. The Ghee Hospital is just five stories, making its height about 75 feet. The condos nearby are two stories. 185 feet does not belong. Only 10 feet deep, the front step back has little to no impact. Moving across the Boulevard of the Allies to the Panera Quality Insight, it can also have a maximum height of 185 feet. With a build-to line of zero, this part of the Boulevard is going to be a canyon. Halkett Street from Panera to Louisa Street also has a max of 185 feet. 40-foot-high coal tart houses are behind these. This is the start of making coal tart a canyon. This section of Halkett needs to be 85 feet for the same reason the Isley Site in front of the Niagara two-story condos is 85 feet. The rest of Halkett has a max of 120 feet. With coal tart houses behind it, it also needs to have its max at 85 feet. With McGee Hospital about 75 feet, there's no context for 120 or 185 feet. Developers will build to the max dimensions allowed. Imagine a height of 185 feet, more than double the height of McGee, and make it 400 feet long. That mass does not belong next to Coal Tart Street or adjacent to Residential Oak Cliff. The argument that 400 feet is needed for trucks to unload inside a grocery is not supported by other groceries in the area. There's no requirement a grocery will even be built. It seems a justification was needed, and knowing a grocery store appealed to residents, it became the reason. Even if it was desired for the grocery, allowing it in zoning for all buildings is irresponsible. Other processes can be used for that one application. These are among many details which are very important and require time to review with diligence. Hybrid town hall meetings where true exchange can occur need to happen. The three minutes provided to citizens is not adequate, just done because it's legally required. Questions don't get answered. Nothing gets explained. There's no back and forth. Where are the...
Thank you. And our next speaker is Mildred Sass.
Here I am.
Morning. Just please state your name and address for the record. Name and neighborhood, I'm sorry.
My name is Millie Sass. I've been a resident of Oak Cliff for more than 40 years. Thank you for permitting me to speak in opposition of Ordinance 2021-1906. And please send this legislation back to the starting gate. Both process and content have been a travesty since it was first mentioned by Walnut Capital in August last year. And I can't understand why it would be considered before the Oakland plan is fully vetted with rigorous public input via hearings. Oakland is seen as the third largest business and economic engine, business district and economic engine in Pittsburgh after Philly and Erie. As yet, we've been told that in Oakland, city planning chose to implement the bonus point system to permit developers to build very high buildings by right without much community input because it's modeled after legislation that was passed for the Uptown community. And we've been told that in Oakland, city planning chose to permit very long 400 feet in high, 120, 185 feet buildings because that's modeled after riverfront zoning in the Strip. We see these items in 2021-1906. Uptown and Strip do not have Craft Avenue traffic, Bates Street's conditions, or the Boulevard of the Allies, or the Boulevard of the Allies that is essential for emergency exit from downtown. Nor do they have the volume of traffic of Forbes and Fifth Corridor. No matter how many bicycles and buses get introduced to Oakland with new visitors and residents, this traffic will still be there and not in Uptown or Strip. In fact, we will probably see an increase in craft if Carlow College builds its 600-car garage at the top of Craft Avenue and Fifth. And this is because Oakland is a great hub of higher education, medical facilities. Since we know that Oakland is so economically important to the region and state, why should it inherit regulations and rules from other parts of the city that aren't even relevant to Oakland terrain and conditions? Moreover, 2021-1906 has gone through so many variations, and now an amendment by substitution, it's difficult to remember exactly what it says from one week to the next and to understand what it would mean to Oakland if implemented. For example, one of the early versions had a modification that added composting as a condition that would give a developer extra height in buildings. Seemed odd to my Oakland community. When questioned, the respondent became defensive and suggested that it was indeed good to have composting in Oakland. But at what cost to the residents? We asked. That person has now left city employment, and yet we may still have composting adding height to buildings in Oakland. Or maybe it's been removed. I don't know. We get no back and forth discussion about 21-1906. We try to understand the content, make comments, and raise our concerns, but still have many unanswered questions, don't you? Please reject this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address city council? Yes, Mr. Ludwig.
Madam President.
Good morning, Mr. Ludwig.
My name is Les Ludwig, 6589 Rosemore Street in Squirrel Hill. I come to you today, and I wasn't prepared. I didn't know what I really wanted to talk to. What point do I want to make specifically to you? And it came right here, right here in the action of this room. It's called Be Prepared. It's the Boy Scouts marching song. And you'll say, well, why pick on that? Well, if you have trees, you have oxygen. If you have nurses who are properly paid for, you have good care. Being prepared is the essence of government. So therefore, let's turn and look at where we're probably totally unprepared. If you look in the Wall Street Journal, a highly respected paper in this country, you would find in the past few days, an article that says that Mr. Putin will, if pushed, use atomic weapons. Aren't we even at the beginning of a front edge of being prepared? I doubt, unfortunately. And time is of the essence. Is there time to prepare? So therefore, government's position is one of being caught off guard, not prepared. So when are we going to start preparing? When is a committee going to be formed to discuss nothing but being prepared? It's overdue. It's been coming due, God forbid, for 20-some years that I've been coming to this podium or more. So I leave it in your good hands, Madam President, to provide the leadership that will say, we're going to do everything we can do in the time that we don't know that we have. So that if we can do anything, even for successors who would, God willing, would survive, that we prepared as much as we could because we recognized the evil of this war and the temptation to use these horrifying weapons. We know what they will do to humanity. We used them to stop the Second World War. Goodbye.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Have a good day. Is there any further speakers wishing to address city council? Seeing no further speakers, we move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilwoman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Colquitt, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Colquitt presents Bill Number 304, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement or use of existing agreements for the creation and installation of public art at Arsenal Park between the city and Sasha Racing. The total not to exceed $17,000.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
And a paper, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kraus presents Bill Number 305, Resolution Amending Resolution 827, which authorizes the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service Commission to enter into an agreement with UPMC Work Partners Life Solutions for Services relating to the administration of the city's Employee Assistance Program by extending the existing contract for another year. Bill Number 306, Resolution Providing for the Filing of Applications by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Department of Human Services for Grants in Connection with the Joint Job Initiative Program Employment Advancement and Retention Network, and Providing for the Authorization to Enter into Agreements with Various Agencies and to Pay for Expenditures for Costs to Support, Implement, and Administer the Program, Costs Not to Exceed $3,828,594. Bill Number 307, Resolution Amending Resolution 118, which authorizes the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into amended professional services agreements and/or contracts with Cervidian Human Capital Management, Inc. by changing a technical error below to reflect the correct year.
Madam President.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, Madam President. May I please offer a motion to waive the rules on Bill 307 at the request of the administration so it may appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda?
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 308, Resolution Authorizing the Issue of a Warrant in Favor of Julie and Kirby Christie and their, in care of their attorneys in the amount of $50,000 relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 309, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with CSI Corporate Security and Investigations, LLC, for investigative services related to the Fern Hollow Bridge Incident for an amount not to exceed $17,500.
Thank you. And Councilwoman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Wilson presents Bill Number 325, Resolution Approving the Recommendation made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Foster Square be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. Bill Number 326, Resolution Approving the Recommendation made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Harbison Avenue be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. Bill Number 327, Resolution Approving the Recommendation made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Vannell Street be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, have one communication. I'm sorry.
Madam President, I just want to make a motion to weigh the rule eight so that Bill 325, 326, and 327 appear on our standing committee agenda tomorrow.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman. And myself, Chair of Hearings, have one communication. Please.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 310, Communication from Michael Lamb, City Controller, Submitting the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the Year Ended December 31st of 2021.
Thank you. You...
Motion to...
To red...
Submove, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we have 11 appointments. Madam Clerk, sorry. You want to take them all together, members?
Madam President, just for a little clearer understanding, let's take them one at a time. Would that be okay?
Would be great. Unless you want to do, how about if we do license, inspection, and review together? Because there's like five of them, I think.
Okay.
And then the others all independently.
Yes, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Sorry, Madam Clerk, because I...
Want to do the board of licensing?
The ones that have a moment.
Or you want to do all of the pointing together and then the informing?
Let's do the informing together first.
First, okay.
Bill Number 318, Resolution Informing City Council of the Appointment of Kendra Ross to the Board of Directors of the Allegheny Regional Asset District for a term of four years ending December 31st of 2026. Bill Number 319, Resolution Informing City Council of the Appointment of Deputy Mayor Jake Pollak as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh for a term to expire December 31st of 2026. Bill Number 320, Resolution Informing Council of the Appointment of Patrick Cornell as Deputy Director of Budget in the Office of Management and Budget. Bill Number 321, Resolution Informing Council of the Appointment of Jennifer Ozinger as Chief Procurement Officer in the Office of Management and Budget. as Chief Procurement Officer in the Office of Management and Budget.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, what's the motion there?
Read, receive, file.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can we have a motion to read, receive, and file?
Madam President.
Yes.
I don't mean to be advantageous, I'm not confrontational, but I, I think there's an error in the communication.
Councilman, it was something from a discussion we had with Director Pollak, with you and I in the room together.
No, this is, no, this is, I, I guess, I, I've noticed that the administration continues to use the phrase Deputy Mayor, and we do not have a permanent Deputy Mayor position.
To be clear, that was not in the legislation, it was just read. Thank you. Thank you for putting that up, but, but it's, it's not on this, on my paper at least. Madam Clerk, is it? It is? Okay. We'll make that, how do we handle that? Do we make that amendment? Can we make that amendment?
I don't think.
Do you want me to? Mended?
I'm not sure we can mend it, Brenda, I don't know if we can. I just, I just, I don't, I just, I don't have a problem that he will be Deputy Mayor when the mayor is gone, but it's a temporary position, it's not a permanent position.
I know. Okay, I know that, but we'll have that conversation with the mayor's office so that we go over correctly.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, Madam President, I believe the motion is to read, receive, and file on all bills that are informing.
Yes. That's it. Would do we, do we have the motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And they're all approved, thank you. And then the next one's, Madam Clerk?
Council President Kell Smith also presents Bill number three eleven, Resolution Appointing Deputy Chief of Staff Felicity Williams as a member of the Comprehensive Municipal Pension Trust Fund Board. Bill number three twelve, Resolution Appointing Kenya Matthews to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission for a term to expire December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. Bill number three thirteen, Resolution Appointing Lauren Brian Connolly as a member of the Board of License and Inspection Review with a term to expire April thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Bill number three fourteen, Resolution Appointing Steve Mazza as a member of the Board of License and Inspection Review with a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Bill number three fifteen, Resolution Appointing Christian Hughes as a member of the Board of License and Inspection Review with a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Bill number three sixteen, Resolution Appointing Jamitra Penny as a member of the Board of License and Inspection Review with a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Bill number three seventeen, Resolution Appointing Julie Ashiola as a member of the Board of License and Inspection Review with a term to expire April thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All approved, thank you. And I do want to say, I'm looking forward to seeing what this license and inspection review committee can do, because I think it's much needed.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you for letting me interrupt. I believe we may have missed the reading of Bill three ten, which is the communication from Controller Lamb. Am I mistaken?
Yeah, we did that first.
We did. Forgive me, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, thank you. It's difficult to keep track with all this, it is. Thank you. Thank you for always making sure we're doing what we need to do, you and Ricky Burgess. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
And now move on to any unfinished businesses, are there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is a report to committee for final action. We'll begin with Councilman Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number three oh one, Report to the Committee on Finance and Law for April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number two sixty-six, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Office of Management and Budget to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Allegheny County Health Department for the United States Environmental Protection Agency's twenty twenty-one Targeted Airshed Grant to Purchase Fire Battery Electric Refuser Trucks and Electric Charging Infrastructure and Further Providing for Expenditures Not to Exceed two million eight hundred thousand dollars. Bill number two sixty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement with the Heinz Endowments for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grand Funds in the Amount twenty-seven thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars for Leadership Training Through a Partnership with Pittsburgh Futures.
Thank you. Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action, all in favor, the passage of what I and the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Okay, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number three oh two, Report to the Committee on Public Works for April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number two sixty-four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreement to Authorize the Pennsylvania Resources Council Providing Electronic Waste Collection and Recycling Services for City Residents and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Bill number two sixty-eight, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Oreo Drive be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section four one seven oh six of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, you've heard the reading in the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action, all in favor, their passage of what I and the name is called. Those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Then moves us on to our last committee of the day, Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number three oh three, Report to the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number two sixty-five, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Corporation Agreement with the URA for the Administration of Certain Projects and Programs and Providing for Payment of Costs Not to Exceed one million two hundred and thirty-five, thirty-seven thousand dollars, Council Districts all.
Thank you, you've heard the reading in the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? I'm just going to say that when they say Council Districts all, and we're trying to make sure that we're distributing funds, you know, equitably across the city of Pittsburgh, I want to make sure that they don't forget Southwest Pittsburgh in that equation. And we hope to make sure some of these dollars are coming to our side of town. And any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Bills are not ready for final action, all in favor, the passage of what I and the name is called, those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Thank you to our clerk's office for struggling through all this today. They're having their own illnesses and working from home in spite of it, so thank you all very much. And those that are here are taking up the, the extra work too. So thank you, Madam Clerk, to you and your team. We have motions and resolutions, is there anything from members? So. Morning, at ten AM, council will hold their standing committees meeting. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight, or email cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Next Wednesday, May eleventh, at one thirty PM, council will hold our interviews for the directorships of the Department of Public Works, the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, and for the Department of Parks and Recreation, as well as for appointments to the Equipment Leasing Authority. Do we have anything from members? Seeing none, can we have a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
The move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do well, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.